Welcome to City Hall in beautiful downtown Summerside. It is five thirty six P M on October twentieth, twenty twenty five, and we are having our monthly council meeting. We have two meetings on this night. Tonight, we have our planning board meeting. Members of the planning board include Planning Board Chair Councilor Duron and Councilors Trent, Home, Adams, and myself. As is usual par for the course, all members of council sit in on planning board meetings, although only members of the planning board will vote on planning board items. And then that will be followed by our monthly council meeting, which would start at six thirty P M. And we'll see how we go and see how the time is after planning board. So I'll begin by calling this to order, as I said, five thirty four P M. I'll call for a mover and a seconder to approve the planning board agenda that is in front of you. Councilor Adams, move by Councilor Adams, second by Councilor Trent, home. All members of the planning board in favor of the agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Here none, we'll proceed with the agenda as presented. We begin each one of our council meetings by acknowledging that the land upon which we are gathered is unceded Mi'kmaq territory, and that Abogway is covered by the Historic Treaties of Peace and Friendship. With this, the hall and any member of the planning board with respect to any item before you this evening to declare a conflict of interest. Councilor Trent.
Sure, yes, I do want to declare, I guess, for the only item that's on the agenda, conflict. And I guess I just want to prelude it by, originally, when I brought concerns in terms of a childcare center, I looked at the Conflict of Interest Guidelines and said, I don't stand to financially make any type of benefit by that in regards to my employer's an institutional zone, and my comments were based on a residential markings. However, it's not just not, I guess, the reality, the perception is also important, right? And Mayor Kutchner very informed me about that potential. And I think in terms of ensuring the public's trust in their elected representatives, I would not want to do anything at all that would jeopardize that. So I will remove myself from that conversation. And I would urge council not to consider any of the comments that I already made, and just make your own decision based on what you think's the best interest for the city. So I'll remove myself at that point, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilor Trent. So just to confirm that if we move into a discussion around the childcare center question or numbers for childcare, the council would ask if staff are presenting, if you can just let folks, let Councilor Trent know. And Councilor Trent can hop out of the room while we discuss and debate that section, and then we'll make sure he comes back. Great, thank you, Councilor, appreciate that. Now we'll move into item two, the Recommendation Zoning Bylaw, Housekeeping Amendments, Bylaw C S twenty five dash zero one. And I think we have Linda and Megan here making presentation, and then I'll hand it over to Councilor Duron, Chair of the Planning Board. Okay. Yeah, so just to note for those who can't hear, Councilor Duron is just noting within the recommendation, there is a mention of childcare. Great, thank you, Councilor.
Okey dokey. Good evening, your worship and members of council. So just coming back to the presentation I have is just a really high level reminder of the housekeeping amendments that we went over a couple of months ago. So what I've done for this presentation is to break it down section by section. So we'll start with section two, which is the definition section. So the housekeeping amendments are recommending the deletion of assisted living and group home to be replaced by supportive housing, emergency shelter, transitional housing. The deletion of small, medium, and large childcare facility to be replaced by childcare center and childcare center home-based. The deletion of college or university and university definitions to replace by school, school post-secondary, school truck driving, and the insertion of a new definition for manufactured home lot. The deletion and replacement of school premises, Building Codes Act, clear days, grade, hospital, lot width, flag lot, and cul-de-sac, and shopping center, those definitions. And then the amendment to commercial residential building, conditional use, daycare, dwelling unit, heritage planning board, light industry, lot, front lot line, lot line, and manufactured home space, site triangle, yard, and Summerside Heritage Conservation Bylaw. Any questions about those definitions?
And maybe I'm just missing something, Sarah, but where it says delete and replace, those definitions under there, is it whatever you're replacing it with, or is that what's going on just sort of?
So the delete and replace, it's just easier to delete the definition as a whole and put a new one in instead of saying like, we're amending this, this, and this. So school premises, that definition will stay, it's just, there's a bunch of tweaks to it, as well as the other ones. Awesome. Any other questions? Seeing none. Section five administration, just one recommended change to this one. This one is to increase the property owner circulation area from sixty meters to a hundred meters underneath the procedures for official plan, secondary plan, zoning, discretionary uses, and restricted uses. Any questions? Perfect. Section six. So this is non-conforming uses and non-compliant buildings. The recommendation here is to delete in its entirety subsection six point seven C two. And then to replace it with, no, just deleting it entirely, sorry, forgive me. All right, yeah, and the reason we were deleting that section is because it was going to be put into the variance section which follows. Any questions on that? Hopefully I can address them in section seven. Essentially, yeah, yeah. We found this regulation like unnecessarily complicated and felt that it would be better off in the variance section, just to kind of, any, like, it is a variance. And so having any variance requirements in the variance section makes it easier for staff and for the public to find. So the recommended variance, or goodness, the recommended amendments to section seven, they are consequential amendments due to proposed amendments to the lot frontage definition. And then also the recommendation that we allow minor variances to major subdivisions. This one was just to align with currently, minor variances are allowed to minor subdivisions. And so it kind of made sense to allow it for major subdivisions as well. Just a reminder, major subdivisions do come to council for approval. So you will, if there's a variance request, you guys would see that. And then, as discussed with the previous section, adding non-compliant building to the list of eligible major variances, which will, variances that will come to council for decision. Any questions, comments on those ones?
I just wonder, I have a question. I don't know if I understood what you said, Megan. So if it's a variance for a major subdivision, it comes to council?
Yes, the major, so major subdivisions come to council for decision.
Okay, I get, but what I'm wondering here, so if it's to say on property, that doesn't come to council?
Correct. Excellent. Any other questions? Fabulous. All right. Section eight, the additional use standards. So under section eight point four, accessory buildings, this one is to clarify this section in reference to residential accessory buildings, increasing the lot line, main building, and accessory building setback to two meters. Under section eight point six, the automobile service station, these are consequential amendments due to the proposed amendments to a lot frontage definition. Section eight point nine, grouped main buildings. So this is to add commercial residential as a type of building that can be grouped. So that's to say you can have more than one commercial residential building on a single property. And then to remove the minimum separation distance and pushing this regulation to the Building Code Act and Summerside Building Bylaw to enforce. The regulation kind of sort of did that direction anyway. Again, super convoluted kind of language, so we felt it would be better just to remove that and to explicitly direct the development officer to send it to Building Code. Section eight point four, seasonal building, changing the section name from seasonal building to seasonal garden center, and then deleting that a hundred and twenty days restriction based on the conversation that we'd had during the kind of breakdown of all of the housekeeping amendments. The kind of comments and concerns were raised about how are we supposed to enforce that a hundred and twenty days? And so we just removed it. Eight seventeen, street frontage and servicing, so that is to remove eight seventeen E in its entirety. And do I remember what that one is? I'm just looking for that right now. So the reason that that one is getting removed, so it reads, "In the case of a flag lot, the frontage shall be measured along the width of its larger part closest to the street from which it's accessed." It's getting removed because it's getting put directly into the definition. Eight point two three, commercial residential building. This one is adding restrictions around the types of commercial uses permitted in the commercial residential building. I believe this one was also clarified, just kind of based on the conversation that was had during the last council meeting. Eight two four, accessory dwelling units, consequential amendment due to the proposed changes to non-market housing, and then adding clarifications and restrictions around the sizing of garden suites setbacks, and the use of non-compliant accessory buildings, and allowing garden suites to be an accessory to many homes in the R three zone. And then this one is in childcare, I don't know, it's super brief, if that's okay. Childcare center home-based, so this one is explicitly stating the types of housing home-based childcare centers are permitted in. Any questions, comments, or concerns about section eight? Fabulous, thank you. Section nine, conditional uses. So under nine point two, the home-based business proposing to add semi-detached townhouses to the types of dwelling a home-based business are allowed in. And then there's a couple of consequential amendments due to the proposed amendments to childcare facilities. And then nine point four, tourism establishments restricting vacation rental properties to single detached, semi-detached, or townhouse typed dwellings. And then nine point six, conditions for conditional use approvals. That one is a clerical change, changing the word permit to approval. Any questions, comments, or concerns about nine? Fabulous, thank you. And ten, so ten point two, changing the road access restrictions, so adding a restriction for perpendicular parking on a public street. And then there were conversations during the last meeting about what that meant for places that already had perpendicular parking. We, it's, it wouldn't be backdated if that makes sense, so folks that already have, businesses that already have that perpendicular parking will be allowed to keep it.
Why did we, why would we do this?
It's safety purposes.
So are we talking like on public streets?
Yep.
Only, or are we public streets and commercial property, do they have?
So what it would be is like any, any street parking, right? You can't have that perpendicular parking, and it's just a safety, just so that people aren't backing out into traffic. If they're pulling into a parking lot on a commercial property, they can park whoever is approved in the, in the site plan.
I, 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 just with the lens of saying, I don't believe whoever should have parked in downtown, they didn't park in their downtown. So I just find it, it seems like a weird thing to, it's common in municipalities across Canada, driving to Charlestown, there's tons of perpendicular parking all along their downtown. And it just seems, it, I don't know, it seems to be a counterproductive thing.
Yeah, Rotary Library, yeah, Service Canada. Again, it's a safety concern that was voiced by area engineering staff. And so we all have been to our sister city, and know, I know myself, if you're backing out onto Queen Street or whatever, sometimes it can be a little tricky, so it's a, it is a safety thing. Yeah, they're not changing what's already existing.
Thank you, Linda.
So we have, business was sparse, and they wanted to change their parking out front to perpendicular? Would they want to cancel and ask for a re-earthing on that?
We would strongly encourage that they do angled parking. Did we include?
We said it was subject to municipal engineer approval.
Thank you, yeah. And then also kind of like coming from that, we did add the clause that it was subject to municipal engineer approval. So if the engineer reviews it and he's like, oh, no, it's, it's actually okay, it's safe to do that here, then it would be approved then. Yeah.
Did you say angled parking?
Angled parking is fine.
On the?
Yeah. Perpendicular, no.
Straight in?
Yeah.
It's either or.
Yeah, so we still, I, 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 I probably just think that they're probably making an issue out of nothing, but.
Corey wants angled parking.
I, I, I just still get confused why it's even on there. Like, it just seems like it's nothing we're even doing, or I don't know if there's value in having it and then having to come back to look at if it's not causing any issues. I just, I find, I find it a little strange, to be honest with you. I don't find anything wrong with perpendicular or angled parking or side parking or.
To keep moving along, councillors have the option to propose an amendment to strike that or to change the language. So let's just keep that on the floor, and maybe at the end of the presentation, if there's ones that you want to do, then it would come in the recommendation package, and that would be adjusted there.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's just keep moving along, and I'll maybe oppose striking that.
In addition to the perpendicular parking piece, is a clerical correction. Ten point three, access design, so proposing to add regulations around vehicle access that reflect current practice. Again, based on the discussion that we'd had at the last meeting, we also included so long, like, if, if alternatives are proposed, as long as approved by municipal engineer, then they're good to go. Section ten point four, flag lots are clerical amendments. Section ten point five, off-street parking standards. So these are consequential amendments due to the proposed amendments to non-market housing, childcare centers, and schools. And then adding dwelling types that haven't been considered elsewhere in this table. Section ten point nine, parking lot and aerial layout and construction, proposed the deletion of ten point nine C two, which staff considers an unnecessary setback. Section ten point ten, mobility disabled spaces, changing the terminology to reflect current terms. Section ten point thirteen, commercial and recreation vehicles, deleting a portion of subsection ten thirteen B that would be difficult to enforce, and then deleting the word permanent in subsection ten thirteen C. And then finally, section ten fourteen, non-operative vehicles, and that one is just a clerical edit. Lots in that one, does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
So just to wrap up in protocol, instead of, for ten point two, instead of restriction, could we just change if it came in moving forward, would we move it forward instead of totally restricting it?
Just bear with me.
If I, I think there's probably some.
Mic on, Sarah, I just think there's some cases where, depending on the street, the property, the, what is being proposed for the property, there's probably some scenarios that perpendicular parking might make sense to their design or to the business to, and just to totally restrict it. I, I just think there's probably a way that we can just.
I'm just looking to see what the language currently is once. So what is proposed in the bylaw? If you look under section two point seven A on page ten of the proposed amendments, it reads perpendicular parking on a public street wide, right of way, may be considered subject to municipal engineer approval. So it, like, we removed that restriction piece. I just obviously didn't update the presentation, my apologies.
So, so it is basically what?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it may be considered.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No worries. Any comments, questions, or concerns before I move forward? Fabulous. All right, section eleven, fencing and landscaping buffer. Eleven point one, the site triangle restrictions, so those are clerical amendments. Eleven point five, other fence and vegetation screening restrictions, more clerical amendments. And eleven point six, landscape buffer standards, those are consequential amendments due to proposed amendments to the lot frontage definition. Questions, comments, or concerns about that?
So eleven point six, we have some residents that have their gardens, it's all operated up to the. Are those considered now okay?
Bear with me. So what the amendment for that one is, is just deleting the word frontage and replacing it with width. So it's basically a clerical amendment that we're proposing, yeah. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Perfect. Twelve yard encroachments, allowable gat encroachment, increasing the listed size of a patio or a deck and deck as the current size of two point two meters squared are considered steps under the Summerside Building Bylaw and Building Code Act, so that one is a clerical change. Any questions or comments about that?
So what are we thinking of? Increasing the listed size?
What did we increase it to, twelve point one? It's four point five, where'd it go? So it's getting increased to four point five meters squared or forty-eight square feet, which is in alignment with the Building Code Act.
Megan?
Yeah.
Can we just go back to number eleven?
Yes.
Consequential amendments due to proposed amendments to the lot frontage, you change that to width?
Yeah. We've been getting a lot of confusion from, from developers between what lot width and lot frontage is. And so we, we felt it would be beneficial if we just kind of clarified what the definition was. Lot width is a more common term that's used, so that was what the, the change is for. Frontage tends to be. The frontage is like the, the front of the property that touches the road. Lot width would be from one side of your property to the other.
Yeah, okay. Good.
Anything else for section twelve or eleven? Super. Part two. So the majority of these are consequential amendments due to proposed amendments around non-market housing, childcare centers, and the clarification to lot frontage definition. So that's the same for R one, R two, and R three zone. The R three zone has the correction to the lawfully existing manufactured homes from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-nine, which aligns with the rest of the bylaw. And then the proposal to delete seventeen point five B and adding nursing care facilities directly to the development standards table. R three R is a consequential amendment due to the clarification to the lot frontage definition. R four has a slew of consequential amendments, again, for the same, same with R five. The R five has the addition of adding language to include subdivided manufactured home park lots in the development standards, and that's just to accommodate a subdivision that was approved last year. Yeah. Yeah. In a manufactured home park where the lots were actually subdivided off instead of being leased. Any questions on that piece? Beautiful. Next batch, the C D A zone. These are, there are some consequential and clerical amendments, so clarifying landscaping coverage along street frontage, and then the consequential amendments due to proposed amendments around non-market housing, childcare centers, schools, and clarification to the lot frontage definition. Downtown is more the same. In addition, there is clerical edits, adding titles and reference numbers to figures and maps, correcting that the discretionary commercial uses are meant to reference District Two. And the urban core districts map was also updated because the boundaries have changed since the map was put in originally. Consequential amendments to service commercial C two zone and the C three zone. And the C three zone also has a clerical amendment, adding the regulation subject to bylaw requirements prior to the permitted uses. That was just a missing piece before the design or development standards. Comments, questions, or concerns on that slide? Perfect. All right, and then Schedule C, sign regulations. This one is just a clerical amendment to correct the sections that were referenced. Any questions on that one? Beautiful. And that's it, guys. Great job. Any overall questions?
Just one, and it goes back to section five, just when you, and I think I know the answer to the question, the property owner circulation going from sixty to a hundred, just to clarify, that's when notifications go out, there's going to be a rezoning next to your property or whatever, okay.
Yeah.
And what do we do, or what have we been doing with the Canada Post strike? Is it just sort of a case by case if?
When we, we looked earlier, late last week, to see what was going on with the Canada Post strikes, they're doing rolling strikes right now. So obviously, we kind of keep on the, in the front to make sure that we can actually send the letters out, and if we can't, then we go hand deliver them.
There, so either way, they're delivered in time, okay.
Yes.
Great, it doesn't seem like any further questions from council. Thank you to Megan, Linda, and Erin for the work that you've put in. Thanks also to Planning Board. This Planning Board and the last Planning Board, there have been many hours going through all of these housekeeping amendments, so appreciate all the time and dedication from members of the Planning Board and council. At this point, I hand it back to Councilor Duron to read in the recommendation for Planning Board.
Yeah, okay, so this recommendation will generally, you know, encompass the presentation that was just given, so, nice and fresh. So recommendation, zoning bylaw, housekeeping amendments. Purpose, there are several purposes behind bringing these zoning bylaw, housekeeping amendments forward. And they are, to add new definitions in relation to schools, daycares, and non-market housing, to amend several definitions to better clarify their meaning, to amend section five administration by increasing the circulation area for zoning bylaw and official plan amendments, to amend section seven, variances, to allow variances for major subdivision, and to give council the ability to grant variances to non-compliant buildings, adding a new section fourteen to address zoning map overlays, including moving the Holland College overlay to this section, and adding a table that includes all the restricted uses permitted over the years, to amend the manufactured home park residential R five zone, to include regulations for subdivided manufactured home properties, and to correct clerical errors. The background, this is a city-led amendment. The staff members of technical services, along with the planning committee, identified a series of housekeeping amendments for the city of Summerside zoning bylaw. And the report, under section five point seven of the zoning bylaw, when planning board reviews a zoning bylaw amendment, it has to consider the following general criteria as applicable. Under section eight point four of the Parks and Greenspace Plan, the criteria of two, three, five, seven, and eight must be considered. Conformity with all requirements of this bylaw. Staff comment, the process to adopt and develop this comprehensive development area aligns with the zoning bylaw. Number one, conformity with the official plan. Staff comment, the majority of the proposed housekeeping amendments are either clerical in nature or do not drastically change the initial regulation and therefore do not impact the official plan. or do not drastically change the initial regulation and therefore do not impact the official plan. The amendments regarding non-market housing are conservative in nature. They don't explicitly include non-market housing uses, i.e. group homes, in residential land uses, and as a result, are proposing to remove uses such as assisted living as a permitted use from the residential zones. The different non-market housing types are being moved to a restricted use where council will issue the decision for these development permit applications. This still aligns with section three point six, what is diversity of the official plan, but as stated previously, a conservative interpretation of the relevant policies. Section five point one point one speaks to accommodating all housing types, including non-market housing. Creating definitions that don't identify the type of tenants, that don't stipulate the type of house, and add a definition for emergency shelter moves the zoning bylaw towards fully implementing this policy. Moving these uses to a restricted use is a conservative interpretation of the policy. The objective and policies under subsection five point four point two, housing for vulnerable populations, don't speak to the proposed amendments and would be applied at the time of development application. The objective and policies under subsection eight, uh, five point eight point one, institutional areas, uh, under non-market housing would also be applied at time of development application. After council reviews a couple of applications, staff intends to bring back further amendments to the zoning bylaw that direct where specific non-market housing types are included as uses within the different land use zones. Council can direct staff to investigate adding the proposed non-market housing types into the, into, uh, into existing land use districts if they feel the experience they have already gained. Reviewing group home applications is sufficient. The proposed amendments to allow home-based businesses in more housing types aligns with section three point six. They also align with subsections five point four point three, tourism establishment, and five point four point four, home-based business. The proposed amendments in relation to schools align with the goals, objectives, and policies under section five point eight, institutional areas, by taking into account how population changes have affected demands for certain services, i.e. proposing a definition for post-secondary schools that better captures the variety of educational facilities within Summerside. The proposed amendments to the definitions of childcare do not align with policy three under subsection five point eight point one, institutional areas. The policy restricts home-based childcare center, uh, to seven children, where the proposed amendment to the definition restricts home-based childcare centers to eight children. Council can direct staff to bring an amendment forward for the official plan, or they can amend the proposed definition, capping the children permitted in a home-based childcare center to seven. If council adopts the definition as is, the cap will remain at seven children until such a time as the official plan is amendment, amended. Uh, the amendments do not impact the Parks and Green Space Plan. Three, suitability of the site for the proposed development, uh, not applicable. Four, compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected, projected uses, not applicable. Five, any comments from residents or other interested persons? Staff comment, a public meeting was held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The public meeting notice was advertised in the September second edition of The Guardian, and the amendments were included on city social media. Notification letters were not mailed to individual property owners as the proposed amendments apply to all properties within the city. Staff did not receive any comments. Six, adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater, and electrical services, city parking and parklands for accommodating the development and any projected infrastructure requirements, not applicable. Seven, impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety and on public safety generally. Staff comment, the proposed amendments to section ten, parking and traffic standards to the subsections road access restrictions, access design, and off-street parking standards insert staff's current practice when reviewing subdivision and development applications. The proposed amendments are not restrictive and allow for staff discretion. In reference to section ten point nine, C, uh, part two, that a parking lot for an apartment building shall not be sighted within three meters of any door or window serving a habitable room. The intent was to address a building code requirement that mandates a one point five meter setback between parking spaces and air intakes for a building. Being as the building code addresses the matter, there is no need to repeat the language in the zoning bylaw. Eight, compatibility of the development with environmental scenic inherited resources, not applicable. Nine, impacts on city finances and budgets, not applicable. Ten, other matters as specified in this bylaw, not applicable. And eleven, other matters as considered relevant, not applicable. Uh, the staff review. City staff supports the proposed zoning amendments with the following stipulations. Number one, that amendments will be brought forward to include the different types of non-market housing in the different land use zones at a later date. And number two, that council provides direction on the maximum number of children permitted within a home-based childcare center. As per section, uh, five point one zero, part B three of the zoning bylaw, the Planning Board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The Planning Board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward to council for a full decision, for a final decision, rather. And the Planning Board recommendation, the housekeeping amendments to the city zoning bylaw be recommended to be approved by council and to direct staff to bring forward a city official plan amendment to increase the number of children permitted in a home-based childcare center from seven to eight to align with provincial legislation. And that is moved by myself, and I would ask for a seconder from Planning Board. Councilor Adams. Are there any questions or comments? And obviously, if there's any discussion on the childcare piece, we'll let, uh, Councilor Trenal make his exit.
I just have a really quick question. It's not childcare, Ken, so you're good. Um, so in seven, the second, um, paragraph where it says, um, there's no need to repeat the language in the zoning bylaw. So would there be any scenario where somebody wouldn't see the building code but would see the zoning bylaw and then would miss it if it wasn't in either, if it wasn't in both, sorry?
It's, it's part of our review, so our, yeah, our building officer would enforce it.
Okay, gotcha. I was thinking like from the public. Oh, okay, I got you now. Thank you.
Councilor Trenal?
Yes, I'm just thinking, I, 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 I think I should leave. Should I not? Or not? Do, do I, just in terms of a vote or, I don't know.
Um, I think if we're not speaking to the topic, I think, uh, you don't need to leave the room. I think it would be sensible to just recuse yourself from the voting process as a member of Planning Board and Council, um, given that, uh, we spoke, that it, that there was a discussion about it previously, so that would, uh, do away any, um, perception of any, um, conflict whatsoever. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
So with that being said, uh, the voting members this evening on this will be Councilor Adams, myself, and, uh, Mayor Dan. Seeing no more questions or comments, we'll just, uh, call for the Planning Board vote, uh, immediately, all members of Planning Board, uh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And abstaining is, uh, Councilor Trenal. Your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Duron, members of Planning Board, and members of council and, uh, staff for the presentation and consideration of the items before you this evening. Um, with that, we will adjourn our Planning Board meeting here at six fourteen P M. Our monthly council meeting starts at six thirty. I had, uh, anticipated that perhaps if we started, completed the Planning Board meeting earlier, we would be able to, uh, try and move a couple of things up, but I think, um, in the interest of making sure that all residents know when the meetings start and have access to, uh, if they're gonna join us at six thirty, I think we'll start at six thirty, so we'll just take a fifteen-minute break. And I will certainly be encouraging council to, um, make good decisions, but make quick decisions this evening, given the game seven of the American League Championship Series is on. Um, so with that, we will, uh, close our Planning Board meeting, and we'll resume here at, uh, six thirty.
I should have learned from the whiskey songs. Should have took it from old George Jones. The bottom of the bottle's always dry. When you're singing whiskey lullabies. I should have listened to the words they spoke. Instead of ordering a Jack and Coke. For all the good times that done me wrong. Give me one more and make it strong. I should have learned from the whiskey songs. I bet you think that you're an angel. Cause you don't like to fight. But if we ain't worth fighting for, then who will make it right? You're giving up too easy, so I'm giving up on you. Now I'm laying here in bed. Crying as I read your notes. Wishing you had the guts to say the things you never wrote. Well, I guess that it's my turn to throw on back and let it burn. I should have learned from the whiskey songs. Should have took it from old George Jones. The bottom of the bottle's always dry. When you're singing whiskey lullabies. I should have listened to the words they spoke. Instead of ordering a Jack and Coke. For all the good times that done me wrong. Give me one more and make it strong. I should have learned from the whiskey songs. Well, I heard another song. About a man who's had enough. And no woman there to save him. Or call his bluff. I pull over and thought about calling you. But I knew just what that would do. I should have learned from the whiskey songs. Should have took it from old George Jones. The bottom of the bottle's always dry. When you're singing whiskey lullabies. I should have listened to the words they spoke. Instead of ordering a Jack and Coke. For all the good times that done me wrong. Give me one more and make it strong. I should have learned from the whiskey songs. Should have took it from old George Jones. The bottom of the bottle's always dry. When you're singing whiskey lullabies. I should have listened to the words they spoke. Instead of ordering a Jack and Coke. For all the good times that done me wrong. Give me one more and make it strong. I should have learned from the whiskey songs. Oh, I got the Tullamore Blues. And I don't know what to do. I can't love no one but you. It's true. And I've got these Tullamore Blues. So many roads I must go down. So many roads that I must choose. Like walking twenty miles into a church. And I got left with the Tullamore Blues. Oh, I got the Tullamore Blues. And I don't know what to do. I can't love no one but you. It's true. And I've got the Tullamore Blues. Ireland seemed like the place to be. Where nobody knew me. Then my hair got turned around in the rain. And I got left with those blues again. Oh, I got the Tullamore Blues. And I don't know what to do. I can't love no one but you. It's true. And I got left with the Tullamore Blues. Yeah, here we go. Somehow I found her. Where my heart was so close. Now she fills my soul, I'm so confused. And I got the Tullamore Blues. Yeah. Oh, I got the Tullamore Blues. And I don't know what to do. I can't love no one but you. It's true. Now I got left with the Tullamore Blues. Hey, yeah, yeah, I got the Tullamore Blues. And I don't know what to do. I can't love no one but you. It's true. And I got the Tullamore Blues. And I got the Tullamore Blues. And I've got left with the Tullamore Blues.
No word has spread from door to door down the Barshiro to the harbor shore. Oh, Joel Bell would steal the house from a widow Victoria. He found some deed that claimed our land and a handshake deal just wouldn't stand in a court of law. He did demand that the house belonged to him. Ring the church bells in the night. We'll gather at the first starlight. Bring your lamps, slaves and mare to save the widow's home. Across the big field or the pond, we'll move this house before the dawn. When Joel Bell arrives, he'll find his prize already gone. It seems that some mistake was made on the day her husband made a trade. And when he died, he was betrayed by Joel Bell's black heart. He plucked to force her to a cold and he'd bring the sheriff and his spoor. So through the dead of winter's hold, we'd come to save her home. Ring the church bells in the night. We'll gather at the first starlight. Bring your lamps, slaves and mare to save the widow's home. Across the big field or the pond, we'll move this house before the dawn. When Joel Bell arrives, he'll find his prize already gone. You could see his breath freeze in the air. As Capulets said the Lord's prayer. And pass the wine to our hands there. Then he sang a sailor's song. There must have been near forty men while their wives all held their lamps for them. They fashioned logs, levers and skits while shivering to the bone. With witches' logs and pinos sleigh, they slowly hauled the house away. And the ice cracked like a break of day as across and she was drawn. We rang the church bells in the night. We worked until the morning light. Brought our lamps, slaves and mare to save the widow's home. Across the big field or the pond, we moved this house before the dawn. Joel Bell arrived and found his prize already gone. We rang the church bells in the night. We worked until the morning light. Brought our lamps, slaves and mare to save the widow's home. Across the big field or the pond, we moved this house before the dawn. Joel Bell arrived and found his prize already gone.
All right, welcome back, members of council and members of the public who are joining us here in person and those online and those perhaps just tuning in now or watching this at some point in the future. Welcome to you too from the past. I've never done that one before. You okay? Great, all right. We'll call it to order our monthly council meeting here of October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five here at six thirty-three P M. Before we move to approve the agenda, I have proposed amendments that I've already discussed. So I will ask for a move and a seconder, but proposed amendments to the agenda here tonight to remove items five A and five B. And those would then come on at the subsequent or next council meeting. Six A and six B. We're not going to remove five A, there's nothing there, five A and B, so that's my fault. Thank you for the clarification, six A and six B. And then to add a new four A, which would be East West Housing Corridor Land Assessment Status Update from Staff. And moving for existing four A to four B. So we do the East West Housing Corridor Land Agreement Status from Staff first, and then we continue with the Housing Accelerator Fund Update Presentation. So I'd ask for a member of council to move and second for if council are happy with the move by Councilor McDougal, second by Councilor Adams. All members of council in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, hearing none, we'll proceed with the amended agenda. Thank you, council. At this point, I will ask for any member of council to declare a conflict of interest with respect to any item before you on the agenda this evening. Seeing and hearing none, we will take along. At this point, yes, so Councilor Trenton, yes.
I just want, just to follow up on planning, this is a new meeting, so yes, it's on number six, D E N F. For the same rationale listed during the planning committee, I will be rescind, not voting, not discussing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Trenton. And then again, if anyone is joining us now, you can go back and check the minutes from the planning board that immediately preceded this with respect to the Councilor Trenton's comments there. Councilor Trenton will be recusing himself from voting on, I think you said, six D E N F, correct? Yeah, great, thank you, councillor. With that, I'll start with members of planning board to approve the call for a motion mover and a seconder to approve the following Planning Board Meeting Minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Member Councilor Duran, second, Councilor Adams, all members of planning board in favor of adopting the minutes as so presented, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed changes, revisions, hearing none, the minutes are adopted. The next is for all of council with respect to the monthly council meeting minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the in-camera meeting minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October seventh, two zero two five, and the special council meeting minutes of October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. I will call for a mover and a seconder from council to adopt and approve the noted minutes. Deputy Mayor Snow moved second, Councilor Cameron, all in favor of the minutes in the package, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposition, changes or revisions, hearing none, the meeting minutes are adopted. At this point, I'll open the floor to members of council with respect to any accolades or recognitions within the community. Okay, we're checking right along, thank you, council. We will move into now the amended item four A. I'll ask C A O, J P De Rosier, acting as to step forward to present an update to council on East West Housing Corridor Land Agreement Status. I'll go C A O, I did say acting, I know it is still subject to, there's a resolution that council still needs to pass here later today despite the fact that we've already announced it, but we'll get to that later. But I will hand it over to you and to Aaron McDonald.
Thank you, worship, yes, I brought some backup, Aaron McDonald, for any additional technical questions council may have. So I'm going to provide a brief update on the overall project and also some updates on the agreements thus far. So essentially, just a brief update on the construction, as you know, it's ongoing and with the exception of some signal arms related to the light at intersections, things are progressing on time and on schedule and on budget. We hope to have a further update on the signal arms for the intersection signals in the very near future, and that will dictate the opening date. Updates on agreements for land. So at this stage, we have seven of the ten land agreements signed. They're called implementation agreements, as you know, and the associated deeds are all deeded at this point to the city for those lands. Of the remaining three land deals to be completed, two continue positively. Staff, as of today, have been working with two of those three remaining land owners and more so simply answering questions about the implementation agreement and the contents. As council knows, all the implementation agreements per our bylaw are required to be the same and include all the exact same language. But some landowners evaluate the terms within differently than others, so staff are working through those terms and clauses with the remaining two. As I mentioned, there's three outstanding, there's one that's unfortunately gone dark in terms of communications with the city since mid to late July. We hope to reestablish communications with that landowner in the near future. But as I mentioned, seven of ten land agreements are signed and secured with the remaining three, two of three actively ongoing and a priority for staff to complete those three in the near future. Just to kind of give some, council some context to the extent of secured land within the East West Housing Corridor. There's twenty-four hundred and thirty meters of new roadway being constructed. Currently, we are lacking land agreements or conversations with those said landowners for only three hundred and ten meters of the overall project. So essentially, at this time, we have eighty-seven and change percent out of a hundred of the land deeded and contracts signed. And as I mentioned, staff continue to work through that process. Obviously, you know, this is not a step that council wants to go through, but if we get to a situation where we are unable to secure land from a landowner, we have an expropriation process that staff and council can follow through on. But our goal right now is to continue to negotiate with landowners and move that forward. Obviously, the purpose and the benefit of this project is substantial for our residents, not only from opening up three hundred and fifty acres of developable land, improved traffic flow, access to emergency services with the new fire hall that we're constructing at the mouth of the East West Housing Corridor along with Island EMS. Opening up their operations across the street from our new fire hall, there's substantial community benefit. And as we know, in these large roadway projects, land deals sometimes become a bit challenging. So we're pleased to report that we're, you know, well along our way in that. It wasn't an easy process, both for staff and more so for the landowners, but we're happy that where we are today in terms of the land status and secured ownership, so. If council has any other further questions on that piece, we're certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
I don't see any right off the top, but I think it would just help provide a little bit of context to why I think it's important that we've amended the agenda to have this update here today and then to, again, open it to the floor for council. It's critically important that we work here in the city of Summerside in a way that is positive and constructive with all of our residents. We have seen the danger, I would say, of situations primarily south of the border where we have situations where people take select facts, as those facts may, can be true. And I think in the context of a Facebook post this weekend, the fact was correct. But taken out of context, they can stoke fear, they can stoke frustration, they can make people mad and they can make people angry. That is a dangerous path for a community to follow because it removes the discussion of context, it removes the discussion of purpose, and it simplifies sometimes complex and complicated issues. So the, I think really happy that council put this on today and staff gave an update and I guess I think that will be the opportunity here for further questions. But also, when you see that, the natural reaction, I think to a degree, is to respond with frustration. I think the only way to respond is with facts and information with a continued commitment to openness and transparency. And it's always an opportunity for us to look ourselves in the mirror and think, jeez, do we need to continue to do better jobs to update and provide information on whatever it is in our community? And I know there's so many things happening right now here in the city of Summerside. So on that, I guess I will pass it over to, I did see one light go on for any questions, but I did want to provide some context to why we are having this conversation today. And I do appreciate the update from staff on what is a really important transformative and critical project for the city that has been on the books for twenty years, discussions underway for over ten. And will really provide some long-term benefits for the broader, for the community, both on all the points that you mentioned with respect to opening up opportunities for housing, but also improve traffic and response times for emergency services. So I'll hand that over, Councilor Duran, question?
Thank you, worship. J P, I was just wondering if you can, or if you're able to speak to, there was lots of questions over the last couple of days about the East West Corridor bylaw itself and the latecomer fee program and interest and that sort of thing. Are you able to sort of just describe that piece?
Yep, any particular aspect or just the whole, whole piece?
The whole piece, yeah, and just how it relates to, if you're able to speak on, you know, like the agreements that people have or if you can't, if they're, I think it's important to, for people to know that everyone's getting the same agreement. We're not picking and choosing different landowners, getting different agreements, just wondering how deep you can kind of dive into that or at least describe at a high level the whole latecomer.
Sure, yeah, and I may lean in on backup singers from Kristin and Aaron at some point, but essentially, the latecomer component is slightly different than that of when a developer builds in our city and there's latecomer fees applied. But in this case, to your point, the bylaw prescribes that we have, all the agreements associated with the East West Corridor are to be the same to the word, and they are, and they will continue to be. The latecomer fee is a calculation of road frontage or local improvement charges based on twenty-twenty-three pricing for a local street, not a collector. So this is a collector road, it's designed to collector standards, it includes the proper road widths, curbing, active transportation sidewalks, et cetera. The value of that time is roughly seventeen hundred dollars a meter per side. Yep, and those are calculated based on the frontage that a landowner would own along the East West Housing Corridor. The, they are attached to the property as a lien at, once the construction completes. Council, as you know, back in June, made a really good decision to waive interest fees for the first sixty months or five years from the opening of the East West Housing Corridor until any interest charges will be applied to that. And I think at some point, staff will be coming back to council to discuss how we can be innovative and creative and seeing good, strong development happening in that area about how our latecomer fees will be handled in terms of interest. Essentially, latecomer fees are not due until the land is either developed or sold. And in that case, then the calculations are made and payments are due to the city for that to recover the costs of the road. the costs of the road construction itself. So, yeah, I think that's a high-level look at that. Did I answer what you were looking for?
Yeah, just, just wanted to mention that in the bylaw itself, the 60-month interest waiving period is not written.
It's not, and it will be. We're going to have to amend the bylaw. The new updated implementation agreements include language to that effect, and they all include that language. But the bylaw will need to be amended, and I think that'll be coming forward once we complete either the roadway or the remainder of the land deals.
Counsel Durrion? Yeah, thank you, and thanks for that JP explanation. I guess I was disappointed in the post I seen yesterday, but then again, it's social media, right? And, but this is not new. This is something that's been going on for a long time. We, I had the opportunity to do the first official plan. We had Malcolm McFarland as the citizen representative, and his comment, why that should be on there is, he said, "We need people driving through our city, not around our city." And that's sort of been on the back burner since our first official plan. So it's, it's nothing new. And, you know, we're, right now, we're in a housing crisis. There was more things come out today that the province of PEI is still not in pace with the population growth and the housing. So, no, I, I thank you for the explanation, and hopefully, we can get all the ends tied up here shortly and get that thing open. Thanks.
Just a question. Back to the per meter, the cost, is it $1,700 per meter per side? Is that what you said?
Seventeen fifty.
Oh, seventeen.
Seventeen fifty, sorry.
If it's $500 an entire road split in half, it's hard to figure out.
Say that again?
If it's $3,500 a meter per road?
Seventeen fifty.
So it was split the seventeen fifty in case people didn't own property on both sides?
Yeah.
So it was.
And did I also hear you say, JP, that those fee, I might be misunderstanding this now, but those fees would only take place after developing the land or selling it?
Correct.
So if it sits there vacant, there's no cost to the landowner?
Correct. They would continue after the 60-month mark to have interest charges be applied. However, if the land is never developed or never sold, the lien would remain with the land, but the landowner wouldn't be required to pay.
Right. And, all right, no, I just wanted to clarify that in my mind, and thanks for all your work on the project so far. And I think it's a real, I don't, I don't know if people realize how much of a benefit down the road that this, this project's going to make. And unfortunately, there's a little bump on the road right now, but I'm sure with good negotiation and conversation, we may be able to get that fixed, too.
Yeah, thank you. And I can't accept the thanks because Aaron and his team and the legal team have been doing basically all the work on it, but I'll accept it on their behalf.
Yeah, well, I mean, you and everybody else included.
Thank you, yeah.
Counsel Durrion?
Just, yeah, one more, sorry. If, just to speak on the liens, and a fair question that came in, if a landowner decides that they would like to sell 10 years down the road, there's a challenge, or there's a, surely seems like there would be a challenge if that person needs to acquire financing to either pay off the lien or deal with whatever you need to deal with when you, when you're selling property or developing property. Is there something you can speak to as far as getting financing?
There's, there's.
If there's a lien on your property?
There's not at this point. I think what we will need to do as we move forward with the project is be open to potentially looking at ways to support those developments that have maybe hit a tipping point where the lien values are higher than potentially they should be, and it may impact financing. Ultimate goal is for these things, these parcels of land to be developed. We can also recoup our costs through property tax base, and that's essentially what we want, is we want to see development. We also want to see thoughtful development and not force folks to develop for the sake of developing. But we're in that mix right now. So the initial five-year interest hiatus was, I would call a first step, and staff recommending this piece. There's 350 acres of land coming online all at once. It's a lot. I think so staff, along with counsel, we'll see how things play out once the roadway is open and we see development happening. And we may need to look at that certainly down the road. There's an openness from staff, I guess I can say, to present ideas and concepts to counsel when we get to that place.
Yeah, I'll be quick in this. The, so just to get clarification, if I was lucky enough to loan, own lands in that area, right, and I was renting that out, it was farmland, we're going through farmland, I was renting it out, and I have no intentions of developing that land, I have no need for it. And I have it, you're saying, up to 20 years? There's no, there's no payment requirement?
There's no payment in perpetuity if the land is either not developed or sold. So if the land.
But is there interest being built up on that over those 20 years?
Yes.
After the first five?
After the first five, thank you, Aaron.
After the first five?
Yes.
Okay, I'm clear. Thanks.
Counsel Cameron? Thank you. I feel like we've gone this far in discussing latecomer fees, but for people who maybe don't know what a latecomer fee is, could you explain what a latecomer fee is? I'm sure there's people who are watching or listening at home who don't know what that is.
It's essentially a fee or a lien applied to the land and the ownership of the land to recover costs for local area improvements, i.e. in this case, a road, to be paid when the developer, sorry, when the landowner develops or sells the land. And it's a, it's a means to which the city can recover its expenses associated with building roadways.
Sure, I guess, just to clarify for people listening, and even for counsel, too. So is this something new that's just happening because of the east-west corridor, or is it something that's typical, typically considered best practice in, in engineering?
Latecomer fees exist in our city, and I might get Aaron to describe them a little more. The latecomers associated with the east-west, because it's a city-led initiative and development, there, it's structured slightly different. So Aaron, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
Latecomer started probably 20 years ago that I'm aware of. A developer was putting a road in, abutting an existing vacant field. He was developing lots on one side and had to put the far, entire part in. The developer made a proposal that doesn't seem fair that I have to pay for all the road costs, and that farmer or vacant landowner in two years, two months, or 12 years' time can get free lots. That's when the mechanism came in place to say half the charges will be based on the frontage of undeveloped land and apply to the cost per road. So it's been in place for, it was Gavin Estates when it was first being extended back, so it's 20-some years ago, that we brought in that practice. I can't say where it originally came from. I can't imagine we were the first ones to think of that, but.
So is it safe to say that this is common practice amongst municipalities throughout Canada? Or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's not like just a one-off that we're doing, or just a few municipalities?
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel Cameron?
I just, I guess, want to kind of build on that question a little bit. I feel like that might have been a bit of a vague question or answer. Is it common for the municipality itself to do this practice? I know it's common for, like you said, developers do this. Is it common for the municipality itself to do it?
Other municipalities do it through, it's not just development. If we put a big sewer line in, just the sewer line itself, and it's going to benefit you four landowners, and he was going, the next three would pay when they go to develop.
Okay, perfectly.
I was working outside of this province and doing the same thing with developers, and they paid for it as they went to develop when their vacant land.
Yeah, okay, that's great. I just felt like between the two, it's, it left a little gray area if we were talking about developers or the municipality. So that clarifies that. Thank you.
Great. So thank you, members of counsel. I have one sort of quick final question and comment here. Thanks as well to JP and the team, but you in particular, when you came on to this role and on to this file, I think you took a new and improved look at the file that was more focused on trying to find solutions that would be beneficial to everyone concerned, that was less driven by, let's recover as much money as possible as quickly as possible, recognizing that this project will provide significant community benefit, is one that is intended to provide long-term community benefit, and also recognizing that when you bring a significant amount of vacant land into the market at one time, there is unrealistic expectation that all of it is going to be developed all at the same time. That's not the ultimate goal or the intention. And, and then finally, for opening up and following up, as, as I read it at least, or have heard you today, on the post-five-year interest rate charge, just because that, if, you know, just theoretically, if that were to go on in perpetuity, the city would recover well more than the cost associated with the, with the, with the building of, of the road and as well, when the property's transferred in any way, that could be a disposition on death or acquiesce or something else, then that would come, I would assume that that debt would come due. So looking forward to your further follow-up with counsel to finding solutions that, again, work for all of the landowners that are involved here, and also to counsel for pushing forward with a really important project. And the reality is, is that, I think I said on the CBC or whoever it was today, that when you've got, you know, seven of 10 so far, and expecting to cover about 90% so far of this road, we as a community can't be holding up the, whether it's housing or traffic flow or access for emergency services for 100 meters of road. So I'm glad we have moved forward and looking forward to it. I do see a hand up in the gallery. I'm assuming, so, but I will sort of conclude my part here. But anyway, thanks to you and the team, and I'll have counsel for questions and feedback as this continues to move forward. Thank you. Great. Counsel Durrion?
Just, I know Mike's here. I spoke with him briefly. Mentioned that he might want to say something, and I know you as chair have the ability or the decision to ask for a consensus of counsel. If you do or do not, that's your, up to you. I just wanted to acknowledge that and that I would, I think it's one of those issues where it's important to hear as much as we can. And I would, I'd support that, but leave it to you and everyone else.
Sure, yeah. So I would, obviously, I never have any problem with looking for counsel, other consensus. And if counsel doesn't have consensus, then we vote on whether or not someone can come address counsel. I did speak with Mr. Martin there during our brief recess. Wasn't sure if he wanted to or not. I see a nod. So with, with that, I have no problem putting that to counsel. I'm gonna probably do it in a more affirmative way. Does any member of counsel have a issue or concern with permitting Mr. Martin to address counsel? No concerns? All in favor? Okay, great. The other thing that I do have, Counsel Durrion, is also the ability to institute a time limit on presentations. I've had to do it once. I didn't really enjoy it. So, and I tried to do it once and then had someone try and tell me that they could have more time than that, which is never a good idea to try and frustrate the chair when they're stressed out enough already. But with that, Mr. Martin, why don't you come up if you've got a few comments? We try and keep it to five minutes or so, but we'll sort of, I think we're good. Okay?
Is that, that we need to cut it short? I, I, we won't have that happen again.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, we're, great, thank you.
No, I'll, I'll try to be brief, and, and, you know, I want to apologize for that incredibly lengthy conversation that went online yesterday. That wasn't my intention, but two stubborn people got to talking and added a lot of extra comments. You know, you guys have been through a lot of work over the years putting this together, and there's an awful lot of truth that this is really needed in the city. A lot of the things you say are correct, open it up for extra services and fire and police. We do need more housing. I think for me, the frustrating part that keeps resurfacing every time somebody puts it on social media that just chaps me and gets me going is that if we're going to open up, and we are opening up 350 acres of land, and I have it on good authority that most of the landowners in that area came forward to the city wanting to develop that land, what is the harm in leaving the latecomer fee portion of the bylaw the way that it was before? What benefit did the city gain by forcing the landowners to accrue interest in perpetuity until they develop their land? If most of the landowners had already come forward and already have preapproval for development, that means most of that acreage is going to be developed, that they want to develop it, why should people like me who don't want to develop be forced to accrue 5% interest forever? Do you know how much $375,000 turns into in 30 years? So 30 years would be a number that my 10-year-old son would potentially be looking, maybe he would want to develop the land or sell it or subdivide it to his children. The current bill of $375,000 turns into just under $1 million. We're really open to, to suggestions of where I can come up with either $375,000 or $1 million to pay for that, but I have no problem with latecomer fees if I don't expect to develop on roadways without paying my fair share. If we develop, then of course I should pay my fair share of that. But if I don't want to develop, why should I accrue interest forever until the day I do decide to? I don't know what harm there would have been of leaving the bylaw the way it was, when most of the landowners already came forward to say that they wanted to develop. I, I don't know why, what would have been the problem. I mean, I read the word, the wording and the language around it was to encourage development. That's, that's in there. But encouragement isn't necessary, as you already have most of the landowners wanting to develop. So I think that's the point that really frustrates me. Every time this comes up, it's, just being forced to do something is very different than being allowed to do something down the road. So that's.
Yeah, those are fair comments, and that's the purpose of having constructive dialogue and feedback.
I really appreciate the ability to come up and talk tonight. I, again, I respect all the work you guys are doing, and I wouldn't want to be sitting in any of those chairs because I know this has been a difficult, a difficult road for everybody. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to come up tonight.
Yeah, but, yeah, thanks, Mike. And I did see the light go on there. It's CAO and table here. I don't know if they're to respond, but I think a little bit to the point that has been made here in terms of looking at that, because to your point there as well, that's, that's totally reasonable. The city also should not be recovering more than its cost, which in your example, if you were to wait 30 years to pass on that land to your son, the, the charge should not be more than what it costs the city to be able to provide those services. So that's certainly something that needs to be looked at. But I don't know if JP, have you had your light on there? Okay. Counsel Adams?
So is there something that we can find out how much it costs the city to do that part, like the certain portions, and cap it at that when it gets to it, so that, like, it's not, it's not a money-making exercise for the city? Is that, like, even a possibility? Like, I'm just trying to start the ball, ball rolling here with thinking of how we can go about this.
It's the lien part of it, too, that's really hard to.
Yes.
If, if, if we say I did want to build a duplex, and I go to moral money, and I ask the bank for money to build a duplex on this land, so I can start paying back my share of the land, nobody's going to lend me money.
Because there's a lien on it, yeah.
Kristin, can you, my memory serves me that the current latecomer bylaw has interest for the first period of time.
Five years.
And then it's not compounding after the fact.
And then no further interest charged.
Okay. And I, so I just wanted to clarify that. But I think it's fair to say that, look, we're going to get the road open, and I know this doesn't provide Mr. Martin and others a whole lot of, you know, reprieve today, but I think we're going to have to have a look at, at the whole interest piece. And I've sort of said that in June, but I wanted to get the fir, the first five years so that at least there wasn't a proverbial gun to the head of, of landowners in the area, and I think we're going to have to have a look. So maybe to answer your question, give us a little bit of time to kind of reconsider how this could encourage development, because again, that's what we want, but in a way that's not punitive, in a way that, that is thought. that's not punitive, in a way that is thoughtful, and it's a lot of land, and, you know, I think in 20 years' time, we still want to see land be developed and not be held hostage to interest fees. But leave that with us, sorry, I don't want to dumb my back to everybody, leave that with us maybe for a period of time, and we'll try and come up with some more creative ways to do what both council and the landowners are looking to do.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, thank you JP, thank you Mike for your comment. When it's presented like that from landowner, it's obviously a different lens and a different view. One thing I would ask or request, could we, because not all the landowners might be watching tonight, or can we make quick contact with them and just let them know, the ones that have already signed, the ones that are, that we are looking at this? Because when you do think of it, you think how that can negatively impact the landowner? So I understand the frustration, and I understand as a municipality what we're trying to do, so, but I think if we could make quick contact with them, let, to sort of reassure them that, you know, give them our commitment as a council, because when I look around, everybody was sort of half-nodding, I think it's good that we, we look at it, and it's, in my opinion, I never thought of it or understood it to be a way that we're making money off the project, instead recouping costs and trying to get the land developed. So if that's the true intent of what we're doing, then that, we need to let the landowners know, let the community know that's the intent, and make sure that we set it up in that way.
Yeah, and I think we'll probably do that inadvertently, because if, if the comment about, you know, the interest of landowners to be eager to develop, they're gonna be in looking for subdivision approvals the moment the road opens, and we'll be able to have those conversations as well at that time. Because again, to Mr. Martin's point, if they're as eager as we hope they are to develop, there may not be need for interest charges, and if there's a few that just have never had any plans to develop, then, you know, we can have the conversation with interest at that point as well. But yeah, we're getting ready to open the road, so I have a feeling we'll be seeing some subdivision approval requests come in in short order, which will trigger those conversations as well.
Yeah, great. Thanks JP, Aaron, and team, and members of council, and Mike, thank you for coming in as well and providing comments. Again, this is one of these situations with, where, as I said at the outset, it's really important for us to work together as a community and to have constructive dialogue, not driven by fear, and also not to have programs that are punitive, but at the same time, we want to get, we also don't want people sitting on land waiting for other people to do the work, and they'll enjoy the benefits down the road, right? We've seen that in our community as well, with some folks over the, our history. So looking forward to further updates, and perhaps we'll be back here talking about it again relatively shortly, but thanks for everyone and having the conversation. And it is gonna be exciting to get the road open. Again, reminder to members of the public, the road is not open now, you should not be driving on it, even if the equipment isn't blocking it off, but looking forward to that here shortly. Great. Thank you, thanks everyone. Great, we are moving into now item, still we're in four, we're at 4B, which is the Housing Accelerator Fund update presentation from Megan Williams, City Planner.
Hello again, your worship and council. I wasn't meant to sound sarcastic, forgive me. Talking again about the policies and the bylaw, so we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago to introduce council to the policies and to introduce them to the incentive bylaw. So hopefully council has had an opportunity to review them, and we can have them adopted today. So today's tasks, we're asking council to make a decision on the five incentive policies, and then to re-grant first reading to the half incentive bylaw. We made a little bit of a clerical error last time, so we're just asking for the rereading of it, which has been a benefit for me at least, because it means that I don't have to go through every single one of the amendments that ended up happening after first reading was granted. Okey-dokey. All right, so just a reminder, the incentive policies are meant to encourage certain types of development, so namely, the development of new accessory dwelling units, the redevelopment of existing properties, multi-unit modular dwellings, affordable housing, and missing middle dwellings. The money is being granted to us through the CMHC Housing Accelerator Fund program. They were based on summersize application. We are doing these incentive policies as part of our 14 initiatives under that agreement that we have with CMHC. These initiatives are stepped towards increasing and broadening the types of housing within our community. So the first incentive policy is the accessory dwelling units. So this incentive policy encourages the construction of new ADUs such as garden suites and secondary suites. It'll apply to new ones, either by adding an ADU to an existing dwelling, or adding an ADU, like building it concurrently with the main dwelling. So the plan is to give successful applicants $5,000 per new ADU. There's a maximum allocation for this, this policy of $40,000, and the, the policy would allow the funding of up to two ADUs per parcel. The expected outcome is that the policy will incentivize eight new ADUs. Any questions on this policy? Seeing none? Perfect. Next one is affordable housing units. So this policy saw the most changes from the last meeting, so I'll kind of go over this a little bit closer. And then the changes in this policy also resulted in changes to the bylaw. To make it clear to council what was changed, it was redlined or probably blue lined, depending on how it looks in your package, so you can see what those changes were. So the affordable housing units incentive policy is to encourage more affordable housing and housing with support, so that's the extra piece there. So the incentive is going to apply to affordable housing developments that are receiving funds from the PEI Housing Corporation Affordable Housing Development Program, or the CMHA Community Housing Fund. And the addition is to include nonprofits who provide housing through their mandate or through their programming, so they don't have to, they don't have to have an agreement with PEI Housing Corps or with the CMHA, which makes the process a lot quicker for them. And the intent would be the same, to give successful applicants $5,000 per affordable housing unit. Maximum allocation for this policy is $150,000, and it will fund up to six affordable units per property. The expected outcome is that the policy will incentivize 30 new affordable housing units. So there is a definition in the policy that explains what a housing with supports is. It would essentially be like a kind of transitional housing, maybe housing with, like where you've got a staff member living on site, like in a, in a group home, that kind of thing. Any comments, questions about this incentive stream? Seeing none? Property redevelopment, this incentive policy would encourage the consolidation of two or more small lots into a single larger lot. It's, it'll apply to projects that result in four or more dwelling units, and it'll also apply to residential or mixed-use projects. It'll give successful applicants $10,000 per consolidation application, and the intent is to have a maximum allocation in this policy of $100,000. So it's going to incentivize 10 consolidations. Any comments or questions on this one? Yes.
I have a question. What are, what do we classify as small lots?
It's just a kind of like generic term, like we wouldn't be saying that lot's not small enough, if that helps. There's a number of, like, small lots that we see in kind of like our downtown area, that if someone wanted to build a larger, like a multi-unit family, multi-unit dwelling on it, they wouldn't be able to, because the lot is too small, but if they own the two lots, next-
Right, but we don't, we don't, we're not specifying that a small lot is under-
Correct.
Point whatever of an acre, okay? Just, clear, so it gets, if I had a small, if I thought I had a small lot, and I came, it's on a case-per-case basis that you guys would say that is not, those two weren't small lots to make a large lot?
No, we, we wouldn't, that, that's not a qualifying thing, sorry, it's, it was just, it's just kind of like-
Just to consolidate to be able to make the-
Yes.
The four or more dwelling units?
Yes.
That's what would qualify as a small?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
So to next point, is there a reason the word, word "small" is in there? Is there a reason why it's just not two or more lots into a single larger lot to accommodate? Like, like small seems to be-
I don't, I don't think it's in the policy, to be honest, I think the small is just-
Yes, it allows the flexibility, if one of the parcels is actually, you know, 10 acres big or something, what they could fit on, but they're just trying to consolidate this together to try and get the $10,000, we're saying, no, really, the intention was take some smaller parcels, put it together that it would fit. If you want to actually relocate it over here, it might fit one of those parcels by itself, but I want to combine them all and, just to get the benefit, you know? Do you understand that example? If I went down to the cup property and had the cup, and there was five little lots out front, I want to put it all together, and I want to consolidate it all together to get that money, well, development could happen on the one large lot. So there wasn't a need to consolidate, we're saying, so they're really, it did allow you the flexibility to say that the intent was consolidate lots to allow a larger development, not consolidate lots to get $10,000.
And maybe I misheard what you're saying, so in that scenario, if, are we, are we then encouraging people to consolidate lots that they might not need to, in order just to get the-
No, we're actually saying-
Or is it the opposite?
It's the opposite. We're encouraging them to consolidate to get the density that you're targeting.
Okay, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And then have those, that's going to be four stories or three?
It's-
Just four units?
At least, at least four units, so it could be four stories, it depends on what the underlying land use layer-
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions? Perfect. And missing middle, so this one is to encourage the development of missing middle housing, excluding accessory dwelling units, because there already is an incentive policy for that. So it'll apply to semi-detached duplex, townhouses, row houses, and apartments up to and including four stories tall. It'll give successful applicants $5,000 per unit with a maximum allocation of $60,000, and the, it'll fund up to four units per property, and this policy will, goodness, will incentivize 12 dwelling units that would be considered missing middle. Any comments or questions on this one? Perfect. All right, multi-unit modular, so this one is to incentivize the rapid development of new housing through modular construction. Modular construction means parts of the building that are built off-site, typically in a factory setting, and then brought onsite to be put together. So it'll apply to multi-units, such as apartment buildings five stories or taller, built through modular construction. It'll give successful applicants $5,000 per unit. This policy will have a maximum allocation of $120,000, and it will fund 12 units per property, or up to 12 units, rather. And the policy will incentivize 24 dwelling units using modular construction. Any comments or questions on this piece? Before I move forward, I didn't write it out, I know, I'm pretty sure it's in the report, there were a couple of questions, the last council meeting, we were discussing this. I believe the question around whether we can control the location of where some of these policies apply, that is at council's discretion, that should be in the, in the accompanying report, to give council an opportunity to kind of discuss that. And then the other question that we received was in regards to whether manufactured homes would apply. So when we looked at the intent of the policies, and then the, like the manufactured units, manufactured homes are technically a single detached dwelling. The only policy that I could see them applying for, applying under, rather, would be under the affordable housing units, if a nonprofit came in and said, hey, listen, like, we want to build like a new trailer park, we feel like this is the direction we'd like to go, like a rent-to-own for folks, and we want to use manufactured homes, then the affordable housing units policy could apply then. There was another question about whether it could be used for like retrofitting and upgrading manufactured homes. Again, like these policies are, like these incentives are more for new housing to kind of increase a current housing stock. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the incentive policies before I move on to the bylaw?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
So when you refer to the half-density bonus, like, and I'm not sure, somebody had just asked me, so I said I'd ask. They thought it was referred to as a density bonus, but I was just waiting till you got through to see if it came up.
Um, you, you might be, or they might be thinking of the density bonusing guidelines. So we talked about that last month, where we were discussing design guidelines, and in regards to the density bonusing, so it was like a list of, like, site development or building characteristics that we would like to see in order for somebody to qualify for that density bonusing. We're not, that's not part of the, the incentive bylaw or the incentive policies.
Okay.
That is a separate piece.
Okay, perfect. Maybe what I'll do is, I'll just send you an email, and then you can just reply back, just so I, because I don't want to confuse the matter-
For sure.
-more with this part of it, so, okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else? Perfect, great. So the incentive bylaw, so this bylaw is being brought forward to enable the half-incentive policies. The bylaw contains the eligibility criteria for each incentive policy. It establishes two intake periods, which are October 1st, 2025 to March 31st, that should say 2026, hopefully it does in the bylaw, and then April 1st, 2026, to December 7th, 2026. It includes the, the conditions for the dispersal of funds, limitations of the policies, and it grants the CIO the ability to reassign funds from one half-stream to another if one of those streams is underperforming. So the procedure for adopting a bylaw that's not a planning bylaw, it only requires two readings that have to be granted at two different council meetings. And that's it on the incentive bylaw, are there any questions? Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a concerned resident, they did, they built an ADU, I think it was October 2024, and he was looking at, trying to figure out if it could be retroactive. And so my explanation to the resident was that according to the grant bylaw, that only considers nonprofit organizations, so we knew, we need to actually approve the specific bylaw, the half-incentive policy bylaw, so that's being done, being put before council tonight, so it's not approved yet, and, and those are the application periods. So I just, I guess, want to make sure that there's nothing that could be done to retroactive if somebody had something other, like in this case, an ADU built, that there's no retroactive process at all, is there?
If council wanted to, they could. We just suggested these two intake periods to capture, to encourage new development versus giving funds to developments that have already been done. But again, that is at council's discretion. If they want to pop that intake period back to 2024, that would be fine. When did we sign, when did we sign, 2023?
I'm trying to think of the date we signed as well, I think it's-
December 7th.
Yeah, I see, and I know we brought this to council in the end of October, right? So October of 20-
And the other option is, they say that there's limited, I shouldn't say limited, there are small targets, or not small in some categories. You could choose to say, if we don't fill that category, we may be open to considering ones that came in still within this half-period, but this would lie, let's just say we're trying to target six or 12. Let's say it was six, and we only ended up getting five, would you want to try and fill that slot by saying one still happened during this half-program? You could look at saying we could make retroactive, but you're still trying to target new developments from the passing of this, and we could create a list of anything that happened in reverse order, or that applied? You know, as another option.
Okay, sure, yeah, so if there is perhaps, so funding at, available at the end, that could be considered.
The project has proceeded now without funding. They, they weren't aware there was funding going to be happening for it, so whether you choose to get new developments or target that for that category, even if it was within the period, again, that can happen?
Would that, no, would that be a, would that be a-
Would that, no, would that be, would that be allowed? I thought this was a new project designed to-
Incentivize.
To incentivize. I, I'm not sure why we'd go backwards. Not that I don't-
That would be why we recommended the October first start date. Um, but again, like, it's, um, it's-
Like, if there are more than one, it's all right, but, you know?
Um, but these incentives and these policies are meant to kind of, um, encourage development during the, the Housing Accelerator Fund period, which would have been when we started, when we first assigned the agreement into when our end date is. Um, and our end date, I believe, is December seventh, twenty twenty-seven. Um, so the start date is either twenty-four or twenty-three, and I cannot remember off the top of my head.
And, and that, and that's just, that's just why I bring it up. The resident was thinking that if it's a three-year implementation, that it would only make sense that if this was developed within that three-year timeframe, that it should be considered. And I don't know what people's feelings are. I'll put that out there.
Okay, I just wanted to check, Megan. In this intake period, for October through March twenty-five, and then the next intake, April twenty-six to December seventh, twenty-six, what are the total number of units that we're actually targeting? Like, I know, I'm just going by the sheets. Some of them, you know, you, you had indicated, uh, twenty-four dwelling units, another, uh, one that was for the modular dwellings, another one was for twelve units, twelve dwellings. So do you have a total number that we're going to be covering in that two-year intake?
So some of, um, some, we are expecting some projects to be able to dip into multiple prod, uh, into multiple incentive streams.
Okay.
So it'll be difficult to, um, to estimate, uh, because it may be fewer dwelling units than we're expecting. Um, but if it's like one, can you do the math? Thank you. So approximately eighty-four new units, if they're not dipping into multiple policy streams.
Okay, thanks.
Just for clarity, Councilor Trentholm, were you going to propose a revision to the language in the bylaw around the dates? Or, um, I didn't hear a lot of feedback from council, so before you do that, I don't know if council want to provide you with any feedback, but that would be the next step, um, just to clarify that, if that would be something you want to do. I would, you know, I'd also take a little quick note on, um, caution making bylaw changes for one specific, uh, resident. If one resident asked you to make a bylaw change that would, um, provide a financial benefit to them, so I'd just generally suggest that you look at framing it in a broader, um, in a wider net than an individual, but I'd sort of leave it to you to decide whether or not you want to propose a specific, um, amendment to the bylaw, just so we decide on that, one way or the other.
Yeah, I, I, I think in terms of just, just seeing if that, if there is that interest in council to do that, and then we can go from there. If there is the interest is to have it, I guess, retroactive and how that would look, I'm not exactly sure.
My, my, uh, my personal opinion is if the intent of the program is to encourage new development, retroactively going back, um, in the program, even if it is in the window, I don't think that makes sense. I think the purpose is to encourage people that maybe are not planning to look at this as an option, so I would think that we, I would propose we stay the course with new development once we've finalized it, not going back retroactive. That would be my opinion. And then any of the funds that don't go unused, as stated in the bylaw, would be then repurposed in other areas of funding that CIO decides to continue to create the units and bring units to the department. I think that makes the most sense.
And also, I think the half-incentive bylaw, uh, indicates it gives the timeframe, the intake timeframe, that it's very clearly noted there. And I think if we were to open that up, um, I think we might be opening a gateway or a door for other people to come forward and say, well, I had an idea, and I didn't do it, so can I. And I think we have to be very much down the law or the line in the byla, bylaw to make sure that we treat everybody the same way. And we, it's hard to open that door without not allowing other people.
Yeah, I would echo those, um, comments. Uh, from what I'm understanding from you, it seems like this person built this not under the assumption that they were going to apply for this anyway. It seems like they built it on their own accord. Um, and like Counselor McCollman just said, if we open it, then there's plenty of other people who maybe have been in the same situation, who'll just go, well, I'll apply for that funding too. I think we should be moving forward, and unfortunately for that person, because I would feel the exact same way if I were in their situation, I would want that too. Um, but I don't think that that is the most appropriate use of how these funds are supposed to be, uh, implemented out. So I would, I would rather just stick with the current dates that are up there and not go back and retroactively, uh, implement to someone else who has already built.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll echo the, the same, the same comments, and, I mean, it says right in front of me, it's a bylaw for HF, or half incentive policies. It's not a after-the-fact policy. So, you know, you could, again, if the money wasn't used up, and there were some at the end of the dates, and it was, you know, you may want to look at it then, but I think it's incentive, not something that's already been done.
Counselor Trentholm?
Sure, no, I, I definitely appreciate everyone's, um, open and honest feedback on that. Thanks a lot. Appreciate that, thanks.
Great, thanks, everyone. All right, what next? Are we, are we still going there, Megan? To another page?
Congratulations, that's it. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Megan. Thanks, Aaron and staff. There's a ton of work here in this package as well when you start going through all the policies and the bylaws. Um, so really impressive, once again, um, work and dedication that people are putting into our community. Um, with that, I will start, no, before I, we move on to item six, uh, well, move to item five, appointment to committees. There are no appointments. Check. Um, we now move to item six, the introduction and reading of bylaws and resolutions. We'll start with, as, uh, council amended, removing A and B. Those will come at the subsequent council meeting. We will start with six C, which is Resolution COS twenty-five dash one hundred and four, CAO appointment. And I would ask, uh, Counselor McCollman, Chair of Bylaws and Governance, uh, to rise.
You didn't know I was going to rise? It's an old, an old habit, I guess. I'm very pleased to bring the resolution tonight, COS twenty-five one zero four. Moved by myself, Counselor McCollman, seconded by Counselor Nick Cameron. And whereas section eighty-two dash two of the Municipal Government Act, Prince Edward Island, requires that a municipality appoint a chief administrative officer, CAO. And whereas, because of a vacancy in the city's CAO position, council appointed the deputy CAO JP De Rosier to fill the CAO role in acting capacity for a six-month term, which, which the term has concluded. And whereas, council recognizes the importance of the CAO in overseeing the administration of the city, implementing council's policies and decisions, and providing leadership to city staff. And whereas, council believes the city would be well-served with the appointment of JP De Rosier to the position of CAO. And whereas, the City of Summerside Staffing Bylaw, CS twenty-three, states that council shall appoint an individual to the position of CAO by resolution. Be it resolved that the council of the City of Summerside hereby appoints JP De Rosier as chief administrative officer for the City of Summerside effective October twentieth, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Counselor. Resolution COS twenty-five, uh, dash one zero four, moved by Counselor McCollman, seconded by Counselor Cameron, is on the floor. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, a call for vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none? Welcome, JP, and congratulations. So many pages here. Um, great. Uh, thank you, council. Now move on to Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero five. I'll hand this over and the next handful, uh, to Chair Planning Board, Counselor Daron, Counselor.
Okay, uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, and I believe, yeah, no, uh, so Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero five. Whereas a zoning bylaw amendment was initiated by the City of Summerside to conduct a series of housekeeping amendments to Schedule A, general provisions of the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. And whereas zoning bylaw amendment bylaw, bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero one, file number zero three zero one. A bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw was read and formally approved, uh, first time at the council meeting held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Be it resolved that zoning bylaw amendment bylaw, bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero one, file number zero three zero one. A bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw be hereby read a second time. Lot of bylaws in there. Uh, just reading it. This bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a seconder, uh, from a member of council, Deputy Mayor Snow. And, uh, Schedule A is attached to the, uh, uh, resolution.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Daron. Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero five, moved by Counselor Daron, seconded by Deputy Snow, is on the floor. Any further comments, questions, statements, members from, from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, a call for vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the resolution is carried. Back to you, Counselor Daron.
Uh, Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero six. Whereas a zoning bylaw amendment was initiated by the City of Summerside to conduct a series of housekeeping amendments to Schedule A, general provisions of the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. And whereas the zoning bylaw amendment bylaw, bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero one, file number zero three zero one. A bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw was read and formally approved a first time at the council meeting held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the zoning bylaw amendment bylaw, bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero one, file number zero three zero one. A bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw was read a second time at this council meeting. Be it resolved that zoning bylaw amendment bylaw, bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero one, file number zero three zero one. A bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw be hereby approved. Moved by myself, and I would once again ask for a seconder, uh, from, uh, council, uh, Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Counselor Daron. We're, for any members at home watching or playing a drinking game where the word bylaw comes up, I apologize. Uh, for the Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero six, moved by Counselor Daron, seconded by Counselor Cameron, is on the floor. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, a call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is carried. Counselor Daron.
All right, there is a couple more, but this last one is just as full of the word bylaw. Uh, Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero seven. Whereas a zoning bylaw amendment was initiated by the City of Summerside to conduct a series of housekeeping amendments to Schedule A, general provisions of the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. And whereas the zoning bylaw amendment bylaw, bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero one, file number zero three zero one. A bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw, wow, was read and formally approved at two separate meetings of council held on different days. Be it resolved that the zoning bylaw amendment bylaw, bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero one, file number zero three zero one. A bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw be hereby formally adopted. And I would ask, uh, for both a mover and a seconder from, uh, council. Moved by Counselor Adams and seconded by Counselor Morrison.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Daron. Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero seven, moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Morrison, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, a call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is carried. Uh, Counselor Daron, continue with you.
Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero eight. Whereas the City of Summerside has received funds through the Housing Accelerator Fund Program, which have been delegated to incentivize the redevelopment of existing properties. And whereas pursuant to the Municipal Government Act, uh, and amendments thereto, a municipality has the authority to establish a grant bylaw for the purpose of issuing grants and for establishing qualifying criteria that applicants must meet in order to obtain those grants. Therefore, be it resolved that the Housing Accelerator Fund, HAF, incentive bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero two, be hereby read a first time. Uh, and I would ask for a mover and a seconder from, uh, council. Moved by Counselor Trentholm and seconded by Counselor Cameron.
Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero eight, moved by Counselor Trentholm, seconded by Counselor Cameron, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Counselor McDougal.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I, I, I guess Megan has left, but, uh, I, uh, I don't know if everybody's seen that report that was out today about the Bernie BBC and what's happening there with the housing incentives. Anyway, it's a, it's a real concern, and I think everybody should take a good look at it, so.
Any further questions, uh, statements from members of council? Seeing, yeah, that, that, like, okay, sorry.
I wanted to say the same thing. I, I did read that, uh, report that was sent to all of us today, here in council. And, uh, there were certainly some things in that that just caused me to rethink it a bit, um, on heights and just different things like that. So, I, I, and I would, as Counselor Bruce has said, encourage fellow counselors to read it.
Great, thank you, Counselor McCollman. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, a call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Uh, the ayes have it as five to three, the nays McCollman, Adams, and McDougal. Correct? Great. Okay, so the resolution is carried. Thank you, council. Uh, move on to Counselor Daron. Again, back to you.
Uh, Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero nine. Whereas the City of Summerside has received funds through the Housing Accelerator Fund Program, which have been delegated to incentivize the redevelopment of existing properties. And whereas pursuant to the Municipal Government Act and amendments thereto, a municipality has the authority to establish a grant bylaw for the purpose of issuing grants and for establishing qualifying criteria that applicants must meet in order to obtain those grants. And whereas the Housing Accelerator Fund, HAF, incentive bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero two, was read a first time at this council meeting, be it resolved that the Housing Accelerator Fund, HAF, incentive bylaw, CS twenty-five dash zero two, be hereby approved as a city bylaw. Uh, moved by myself, and I would ask for a seconder from council. Uh, Counselor Trentholm.
Thank you, Counselor. Resolution COS twenty-five dash one zero nine, moved by Counselor Daron, seconded by Counselor Trentholm, is on the floor. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, a call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Three, five ayes, three nays, and ayes the same as the last one. The ayes have it, the resolution is carried. Thank you, Counselor. Move on to the next one for you.
Uh, my last, uh, COS twenty-five dash one one zero. Whereas the City of Summerside has an agreement with the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation under the Housing Accelerator Fund Program to accelerate housing construction by eliminating barriers through the implementation of fourteen initiatives. And whereas the City of Summerside has received funds through the Housing Accelerator Fund Program, which have been delegated to incentivize the, sorry, just confused how it went into the bullets, um, which has, which have been delegated to incentivize the construction of new accessory dwelling units, the construction of new housing units for vulnerable populations, the construction of missing middle housing, the construction of multi-unit modular housing, and the construction, or, or the redevelopment of existing properties. Therefore, be it resolved that council approves the following incentive policies. Accessory dwelling unit incentive policy, incentivizing affordable housing policy, missing middle housing incentive policy, modular housing incentive policy, and the property redevelopment incentive policy. And that was moved by myself, and I would, uh, ask for one final seconder from council. Deputy Mayor Snow.
Thank you, Counselor. Resolution COS twenty-five dash one one zero, moved by Counselor Daron, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We have five ayes, three nays, the same as the previous two. The ayes have it, the resolution is carried. two. The ayes have it, the resolution is carried. Thank you, council. We now move on to item 6J, COS 25-111, long-term debt, electric and Sunbank. I believe this would be, Councilor McDougal is chair and representative of finance.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a resolution here, moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow. Whereas the City of Summerside borrows from financial institutions to finance the cost of a portion of its capital expenditures from the previous fiscal year and issued requests for proposals, which closed on October 7th, four responses were received. And whereas the loans detailed in the table below represent new debt borrowing required for 2023, '24, and '24, '25 capital expenditures for the electric utility, the city's cash injection into the Sunbank project, costs for the Sunbank project that were not eligible under the infrastructure funding program, plus other 2024, '25 capital expenditures for the general fund and the water and sewer utility that were not incurred when our previous borrowing was done. The debt service costs associated with this borrowing are included in the 2025, '26 budget. Be it resolved that council authorizes long-term borrowing in the amount of $11,772,400 to TD Trust. TD Canada Trust, I should say. The new loans, which amount to $11,772,400, I'll outline each one of them here. The first loan amount is $7,98,700, and it's to do with capital expenditures. $5,255,500 for the 2023, '24, and the '24, '25 electric utility infrastructure. Also, $1,334,200 for the Eagle Park Building holdback. $438,000 for the water utility balance of 2024, '25 capital expenditures. And $71,000, the sewer utility balance of 2024, '25 capital expenditures. The term, the loan is five years, amortization over 20, and the rate of 3.319 percent, and it's interest only until October 31st, 2025, beginning in November 2025, equal blended monthly payments included with principal and interest. The second loan amount was $3,287,000, and that's for Sunbank, the city's share of joint venture with the project partner Samsung Renewables Resources. And it's over five years, amortized over 10 years, and the rate is 3.293 percent, and it's interest only until October 31st, 2025, beginning in November 2025, equal blended monthly payments including, included principal and interest. And our last one is $1,386,700. It's for the Sunbank ineligible costs under federal provincial project funding agreement. It's a five-year term, and it's 10 years amortization, and the rate is 3.293 percent, interest only again until October 31st, 2025, beginning in November 2025, equal blended monthly payments included, principal and interest. The city of Summerside can incur the indebtedness and liability as set out above. The loan total of $11,772,400 will not cause the City of Summerside to exceed its debt limit as set out in the Municipal Government Act, Part 3, Division 3, Section 1, 643. The security required for this borrowing transaction is the approximate borrowing resolution and related documentation.
Thank you, Councilor McDougal. Resolution COS 25-111, moved by Councilor McDougal, seconded by Councilor Deputy Snow, is on the floor. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing, hearing none, a call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the resolution is carried. Thank you, council. Thank you, counselor. With that, we will move into our department reports. And I would just take a quick note to council. We did begin our meeting this evening at 4:30, approximately three or, oh gosh, almost four hours ago, in camera. I would ask council to stay at the conclusion of the department reports, as I just want to have, I want to, there's still one piece that I made a note that is still outstanding from the in-camera discussion that I want to make sure that we address. So I just put a note there to council that we'll just continue the in-camera portion of the meeting at the conclusion of the department reports. With that, the first department report isn't a department at all. It's my report and I put that on, and sometimes I wonder why I put that on, because before the meeting, I'm scrambling sometimes. But obviously, a series of different things happening over the city. And for me, over the course of the past month, generally representing the city at whether it be great announcements like the Centennial Cup, or events and speakers. We had Fred Fox here in the city, whether it's at birthday events, community events throughout the city. Two that jumped out that I do want to just touch on here as well is one is the continued work by members of this council at the committee level. One of the highlights from the past month was the City of Summerside, under Councilor Adams' leadership, held our own town hall and had a really positive engagement process with members of the public on community safety. And councilors should be commended for taking the charge there and the lead, and it was a constructive and valuable dialogue with members of our community. And then the second, which I didn't anticipate would show up in any other reports, but I think is valuable to share in for members of the public. Last week, staff at the City of Summerside engaged in just three or four days of full day, full team, so that means pretty much everyone who works at the city, process doing a deep dive into service level review. And what that means, the way I sort of, the analogy I'd like to use is the entire city and all the people who work here and serve our residents unpacked the entire suitcase of all the things that make it work, and have begun a process of reviewing all of them to make sure they work as best they can for members of our community. And council was involved on two of those nights as well. But I think staff and JP and your leadership and the leadership of all the directors should be commended for not just putting in the time, but actually making good use of the time and asking yourselves and each other really hard questions and putting yourselves in front of the mirror and challenging each other. It was really inspiring to see the conclusion of some of that work and look forward to sharing more of that with our residents as the outcomes of that work continues to evolve. So that's sort of what I'm going to use as my highlight. I was going to touch briefly on the FPEIM, Semiannual Board Meeting, which attended this past weekend. And, but President of FPEIM has joined us today, like most days, Councilor McDougal, and he's going to touch on that and explain how he called me out in front of a room of 100 people for being late when I really wasn't. But anyhow, with that, I'll pass it over to Councilor McDougal, Finance Chair Representative and President of the Federation of Prince Edward Island Municipalities.
Perfect. Thank you, Worship. I do have a report here by our director, Kristen McDonald. Good evening, colleagues. The audit for the 2024, '25 fiscal year has been completed and statements have been posted on the city's website. And here are some highlights from our 2024 fiscal year. Please refer to our discussions on the 2024, '25 financial statements, which can be found on the financial statements on our website. In accordance with public sector accounting standards, PSAs, our consolidated statement of operation is reporting an annual surplus of 6.4 million. This is comparable to a budget surplus calculated on the same basis of 6.5 million. PSAs require governments to record infrastructure funding received for capital projects to be recorded as a grant and not amortized over the useful life of the asset. The receipt of infrastructure funding totaling 4.7 million for capital infrastructure is the main reason we are reporting a 6.4 million surplus. The city's net financial debt increased by 6 million to 102.2 million, and this is mainly due to the significant capital investments and expenditures associated financing of these assets for the solar storage project. This significant project will provide long-term recurring revenue, which will be more than, which will more than offset the debt servicing costs required to fund these capital expenditures. And long-term debt has increased by 4.9 million. The city's still within the acceptable debt limits. However, debt servicing costs are increasing, which means a greater percentage of the revenue is required to pay on these debt service costs. And this may require reduction in other spending unless new sources of revenue are realized. The Finance Committee will be reviewing the community support program policy and developing the 2026, '27 budget schedule at the meeting scheduled for later this week. Yeah. Our report for the November council meeting will include a projection to March 31st, 2026. Departments are meeting with Finance to review the year-to-date results and forecast expenditures for the balance of fiscal year. Our utility accounts receivable has increased over the last month with a total past due of 273,600, which is an increase of $50,000. Thirty-six accounts have a balance greater than 60 days past due of $61,400, which is 22.4 percent of the total past due. Eight accounts remain disconnected for non-payment and will not be reconnected until payment or satisfactory payment arrangements have been received. Disconnections of service or non-payment are still occurring, and if you receive a collection of those, we're strongly urged to contact customer service at 902-432-1230 to discuss payment options. Thank you. That's all I have. That's all she wrote. I do have, I do want to touch on the FPEIM Semiannual Meeting we held in Eastern Kings. That's a long ways. It's like another, just like going to another province. It's a long ways down. There's a two-hour drive basically from Summerside, so, but it's always, always a great drive in the fall in PEI. It's beautiful, any time of the year. But we had a good turnout. We had some great sessions there. We had Gordon McIntosh was with us for the day, and he led two workshops, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. And everybody in that room was heavily involved. It was a great session, and it's probably one of the most productive sessions that I've been involved with as president. And there was a lot of great ideas. It's coming right from the councilors and, you know, the mayors and CAOs that were there. And so, no, it was, it was a good session and we'll be, we're having a meeting this, I think Wednesday, to review all the notes and stuff that was taken. So there'll be some good work come out of that. So really appreciated the turnout and missed a couple of yous, but thank you, Mayor, for being there. But I know everybody's got a busy schedule and that's a long ways down. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll keep moving along. Councilor Trentholm, Representative for Community Services and Tourism Counselor.
Sure. Thank you. At the Dome, preparations are underway for a busy season. We have secured several user groups and are eagerly anticipating the opening of the new multisport court. It's scheduled for early 2026, and we're very excited about this programming potential for the city with the new facility. And for active living, over the past month, active living has been busy planning a variety of activities, so from PD days, holiday programs, active winter, go PEI, and they're even underway for the summer programming in the summer there. We recently hosted our first PD Day Camp, which was a great success. Many happy participants who hoped to return for future camps. And we also launched our first preschool sports session of the year and secured a partnership with Ursa to once again offer youth multisport program this fall. And in the pool, we started swimming lessons on September 2nd, running for eight weeks. We have 210 enrolled. Adult swimming classes have started up. Dolphin swim class started up five days a week. Lots of startups, by the way. Dolphin swim meet, two days ago, there was a swim meet, I guess October 18th, yeah, 125 swimmers. And the master club has started up again, swimming three days a week. And we had our first PD this month, and we had inflatables in the pool. So that's going to be a party time. And we'll be putting these out most of, most, if not all, days of PEI. So anybody listening at home, if they don't need to get their kids to have a little bit of fun, come on the PD days. And we're excited to have them available for sure. And aquatics classes are back in full swing with numbers growing each week. Everyone was very happy to see consistency in those classes being offered. Bowling, youth bowling, ladies league and Wednesday night league started back in the lanes, and Halloween 10-for-10 passes went on sale and are always a really huge hit. Meetings, conferences, we had 20 convention hall bookings the past month, an increase from September, from last September would be 21. We hosted the Northeast Shrine Conference. Shriners from all of North Atlantic region, including some of the northeastern states, were hosted here in Summerside. Three events spanned over three days, including meetings, clown and car competitions that parade through the city in a banquet that saw just under 500 shriners and their spouses in attendance. We transformed the main lobby into an extension of their conference space. And we also hosted the Beef and Brew's Fall Flavors Event and had 200 in attendance. And of course, the cap season that started, so season tickets are underway and selling well. Open Home Opener was on the 26th and saw a large crowd. And tickets for Stars on Ice went on sale as well. Final comment here on SETS. SETS team awarded, sorry, attended the 2025 event, Atlantic Summit in Truro, and came home with the winning hardware of the '24, '25 event of the year for its efforts hosting the Women's Rivalry Series. Last February, SETS team announced being, sorry, SETS team also announced being awarded the 2026 Centennial Cup, which I'm sure we're all wide aware of and really excited about, and Hockey Canada's Nasser Junior Championships. Oh, sorry. SETS Canada will be starting up its host committee for annual events such as Noah Dobson's Hockey Fest, Ray Carter Cup, and Canada Cup later this month. Submit it bids for 2027 and 2028 Baseball Canada Events, and continues to be engaged in stakeholders bidding process, event opportunities, and increasing relationships and conversations with existing and new partner events. So SETS is busy and setting a, putting us on the world stage. So, thank you.
Counselor Morrison?
Just a quick question, and JP will probably have to answer, but the work that's ongoing on the baseball diamond on the corner of Granville and Green, so are they installing turf or are they installing grass?
We are installing grass. Unfortunately, we had to resculp the project. The funding we received, while we're very happy to have received, it was not enough to proceed with turf infield, so we're doing grass infield and enhancing the irrigation systems using that funding as well to make maintenance as easy as possible with the grass field. So, yeah.
And I assume the, there's a warning track or something being put in around the fence?
Correct.
Inside the outfield fence. Okay.
Correct. And Tanner can correct me if I'm wrong. He's here tonight, but I think that's a requirement for our upcoming baseball nationals, both with the Ray Carter Cup and the Canada Cup.
Okay. No, a lot of that I had assumed, but I, anyway, I get some questions posed to me, so I just wanted the answers before I returned the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Trentholm. We will move on to Representative McCollman, Representative for Governance, HR, and Legal. Counselor McCollman?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd just like to say good evening to my colleagues and residents who may be viewing. And a thank you to Director Kendra Gunn for preparing this report. The recruitment process for our development officer is continuing, along with staff who facilitated the hiring of casual laborers, seasonal staff, and customer service representatives who are now working at Credit Union Place and the Dome. Current job postings include lifeguards, an equipment operator, and semi-skilled laborer. Staff attended the monthly joint occupational safety and health meeting and the CAO, and the CAO meeting and City Hall Joint Health Subcommittee meeting as well. Basic and intermediate first aid is scheduled for the staff this month, and I believe that would be for October. Staff-led orientations for several new staff. Congratulations goes out to Aaron Petrie, who was the successful applicant for the accounting technologist position in the Finance Department. Robert McTheeley, who was promoted to a work foreman at Public Works. foreman at Public Works, and Joe Pendergast, who has moved from Public Works and accepted the meter reader position with the Electric Department. Staff are working with Blue Cross representatives on an occupational involuntary enrollment for additional life and critical insurance benefits, as well, staff liaised with workers, compensation board, and insurance representatives on open claims. Staff liaised with the city's pension plan custodian in response to questions from staff and pensioners. Staff also adjusted part-time staff wages based on the recent minimum wage increase. A job analysis questionnaire has been distributed to all full-time staff that will help develop job descriptions and support recruitment and selection, along with identifying training and development needs in this next upcoming year. The department continued working with various city departments and external legal counsel in support of the city's staffing, human resources needs, and legal matters involving reviewing contracts, leases, and supporting legal work involving civil claims on behalf of and against the city and attending hearings. We pass our condolences on to the families of city retirees who have passed away in recent months. Paul McWilliams, Reggie Blanchard, and Claude Woodington. And just as a very footnote, I'll be attending the Lifehouse Emergency Shelter fundraising dinner this week on behalf of Mayor and Council and the city of Summerside as well. I will be attending with Mary Jo, one of the committee members for the Seniors Committee at Park Hill Place, and we're going to be doing a session with seniors to hear their thoughts and opinions and concerns about seniors' needs in the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor McCollman. On that call on Councilor Morrison, Representative for Municipal Services.
Thank you, Your Worship. Public Works Water and Sewer Utility Highlights for the Month. Winter season starts on November 15th with operations spending much time preparing the snow and salting equipment for the winter operation cycle. The coming month is, the coming month is clearing streets of debris to be ready for rain events, with leaves falling on storm drainage sewer cover, system covers. Temporary speed bumps are being removed for the year. The water system continues to be monitored for water level in all wells supplying potable drinking water to residents. All is well to date on water levels, with some rain days being seen in the water cycle. Hydrant flushing has been completed for the city. The sewer systems lift stations, annual maintenance has been completed with pump inspections and cleaning. And some people will be happy to hear this, the city's tower clock at City Hall has been repaired and is now functioning and on time. Electric utility highlights. The number one, number five generators continue to have the cylinders maintained and are expected to be complete by mid-November, ready for winter electricity needs. Assistance from UK Engine Specialists assisting crews in the work. The east-west housing corridor roadway lighting and electrical lines are to be completed by the end of October and are expected to be lit when the street opens officially. And work to replace aging poles is continuing in the Mill Crescent area of the city industrial park. Poles are from the 70s and 80s and need replacement. This will need some power interruptions during the next month to complete the work. And I'd like to thank Director Ray Goody for that report.
Thank you, Councilor Morrison. I would now call on Councilor Cameron, Cameron. There's an R in there. Cameron, Representative of Arts, Culture, and Diversity. Councilor.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks to Lori Ellis for the following report that captures some highlights of culture Summerside activity from the mid-September to mid-October time period. Culture Summerside's permanent staff continued through the months of September with their museum tours, and they are now working on the activities and programming for the winter and fall. A new exhibit titled Sugar Rush opened at the McNott History Center and Archives on the 16th of October. Visitors can enjoy seeing archival photos of some of Summerside's earliest stores with candy counters and listen to audio interviews of local residents reminiscing about buying candy as a child. The exhibit also captures the history of candy-making, the candy industry, healthy candy, candy in the holidays, and candy in pop culture. I kind of feel like Justin sang Bylaws so many times, but it was candy. The exhibit will be on display through the holiday season. The 25th Historic Ghost Walk took place on October 16th. The program takes visitors on a guided tour of historic Summerside to hear the true stories of Halloween and the darker side of the island history. It was also sold out with over 300 people purchasing tickets. I was one of them, but did not get to go because we had a meeting that night, but I heard it was fantastic, and I will go next year, so no one plan a meeting for that day. During the summer month, an exhibit titled Sam Sentiments by artist Sandy Glant was featured at the McNott History Center and Archives. In addition, an exhibition presented at the LaFergie Cultural Center by the Ladies Slippers Rug Hooking Guild titled Hooked on Maurice and Hooked on Maurice Art in Wool extended to the end of September. This was a vibrant textile tribute to the renowned Prince Edward Island artist Maurice Bernard. Maintenance work has taken place at the McNott History Center and Archives over the September to mid-October period. The addition of fresh paint, the reorganization of the space, and the addition of new exhibit components allows for an improved visitor experience and service delivery. And preventative conservation measures are currently being implemented on the Bishop's Machine Shop to mitigate the buildup of oxidization on the historic machinery. And a very special thanks to Colin McIntyre, a past city employee, for doing some work on that as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor Cameron. With that, we'll move on to Councilor Duran, Representative for Technical Services.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. The 2025 construction season is still going strong across the city, and many projects will continue through the fall as crews complete their work and final inspections. Water main replacements on sections of Ottawa Street and Harvard Street are nearing completion. Similar work on LaFergie Avenue and Manson Court is now finished. Upgrades are also wrapping up at the Wilmot Well Field and at one of the city's wells on South Drive. Sewer work along South Drive is close to completion as well, and the boardwalk replacement project is moving along and should be done shortly. For the month of September, 17 building permits were issued with a combined value of just over $2.7 million, and that brings our year-to-date total to 141 permits worth approximately $34.1 million. The east-west housing corridor is also nearing completion. The seal coat, line painting, and signage are being installed now. We're still waiting on delivery of the poles for both traffic signals. Those are longtime lead items, as we remember from previous areas, about nine to 12 months, but they were ordered back in January, so we're hopeful to see those soon. And finally, as the season winds down, staff encourage residents who still have projects planned for this fall to reach out to the city for any assistance or guidance that they might need. And thank you to Director Aaron McDonald for preparing the report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them, and if not, I have just one more tidly bit. Just wanted to let everyone know that Bruce and I are holding a, an open house on Wednesday at the St. Eleanor's Lions Club at 6 o'clock PM. Everyone here is more than welcome. Everyone, doesn't have to be from Ward 1 or Ward 2, anyone in the city is welcomed as well. And just Bruce wanted me to mention that if any of you want to show up, you got to bring your own donuts. There'll be, thank you to actually Compton's Farm Market, who was supplying us with some refreshments, and McDonald's as well, supplying us with some hot coffee.
Like supplying?
Supplying, yeah, or providing or donating or, it's in the bylaw bylaw. Yeah. So that's everything for me.
You giving away bylaws?
Thank you, Councilor Duran, and that was great. All right, we'll move on. Deputy Mayor Snow, Representative for Economic Development and Growth.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to Director Mike Tathuska, who compiled the report. As we move into the fall season, the City of Summerside Economic Development Office is advancing several initiatives. Momentum is building, particularly in downtown core and clean tech sectors, and businesses are responding. Downtown Summerside has seen 20-plus million in active investment. Developments are currently underway are the Regent, a major mixed-use project, adding new residential and commercial space to support a growing live work environment. The former Bank of Nova Scotia building is being reimagined, reimagined for a modern use while preserving its character. Urban living on the rise since 2016. Downtown population density has grown by 28%, underscoring demand for walkable vibrant neighborhoods. Downtown Summerside is being recognized as a leading destination for investment, lifestyle, and innovation. The resurgence is a result of strategic planning, public-private collaboration, and a clear vision for vibrant, walkable, and economically active downtown. Investors are noticing what once was a hidden gem is quickly becoming one of the most attractive urban development opportunities in the province. The Economic Development Office is ready to assist stakeholders and businesses in leveraging these opportunities. For investment inquiries, engagement ideas, and program participation, please contact the Department of Economic Development. This concludes the monthly report. If there's any questions, I'm free to answer.
Just for members of the public who weren't listening with the mic off, Councilor McCollan was querying Councilor Snow about his interest in angular parking. Certainly, if you were with us two and a half hours ago, you'd get the joke. The last, but not least, of course, I think we change these up every week. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, but Representative Adams, Councilor Adams, Representative for Emergency Services and Comms.
Thank you, Worship. Started with Summerside Police Service, and this was compiled by Chief Blackier. Once again, it's a busy month for calls for service. Members of the police service have completed their annual firearms qualification during the weeks of September 15th and the 22nd. There was a representation from SPS at the Police Memorial Service on September 28th, both at the local service and at the national site in Ottawa. Two members of the police service assigned to the provincial joint enforcement team officially joined the unit in September. This is referred to as the Jet Team, and it is now fully staffed. Operationally, the Jet Team is asked, tasked with disrupting the mid-to-high-level drug trafficking groups operating in PEI. There's no questions on police services. I'll keep going into fire services during, this was done by Ronnie Colton. Yep. And during the month of September, firefighters responded to 32 calls. For example, two, two of those were medical first responder calls. 26 were silent alarms that are attended by one company of 10 firefighters, and four will general, are general alarms, such as structure fires, and all firefighters are required to attend. Training, firefighters took part in 365 hours of training in September alone. This included wildland presentation, water shuttle drills, EV training, hose deployment, and six of the members attended a two-day training session put on by Red Isle Training Group. Just to note, the members participated in several firefighter community events during the month, such as the Atlantic Superstore Superhero Day, Touch Truck at Coolbreeze Farms, West Prince Mutual Aid Meeting in Tignesh, and Chief Enman attended the Canadian Fire Chiefs Conference in Winnipeg. And just a shout out to that, you had mentioned the service review that all staff were taking place in, and that does, did include our fire and police chiefs and deputies. And as well, we had, I guess this would probably be next month, but we also did have the, the review, the safety, safe neighborhoods review, and they were in attendance at that as well. So when you consider staff, sometimes you don't consider them in your whole staff because they're sort of like, you know, they're standalone groups, but they're very much in doing what all our other staff are doing, so it's much appreciated. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor. Do you have a question, Councilor McDougal?
Just a comment. It's so nice to see the medical first responders numbers way down for, for the last couple of months, so.
Councilor McCollman?
Councilor Carey, just, I wanted to also give a shout out to the fire services department and the policing department. The fire that took place on Belmont Street, I think sometimes we as a council, when we're going through budget sessions and, you know, having to look at all of the costs and expenses and what's needed and whatever, to see how they work together and the ladder truck, the equipment, all of, all of the apparatus that they have in order to fight a fire. I don't think we realize just how much of a toll it does take, but thankfully, they do have some really good equipment to work with. So I think when we're making those decisions, we always have to remember they need to have very dependable and reliable equipment and for breathing apparatus and all of that. So they did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Adams, and Councilor McCollman with those words. So with that, we will conclude the public session of our meeting. As I said, we should be pretty quick to wrap up the in-camera, and at that point, we will adjourn our meeting, so I'll just give a couple of minutes. It's really only you, Mike, here, I think, so we'll give you a minute.